Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to a special meeting of the Rancho Mirage City Council for Friday, February 28, 2014. And would you please stand and join Councilman Iris Motrich in the salute to our flag?
Please join me, hands over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We welcome you all here to this beautiful day in Rancho Mirage, and hopefully you will have a good day here and learn a lot about the Ritz-Carlton and other information. So you're certainly welcome, and we'll have comments from the audience in a little while. Okay, let's begin with roll call, please.
Councilmember Hines is absent. Councilmember Hobart?
Here.
Mayor Protam Smotrich?
Here.
Councilmember Wiles?
Here.
And Mayor Kite?
Here, thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to non-agenda public comments, and this is an opportunity for any of you who are in the audience that you can speak on any item that is not on the agenda today, and we would hope that you would keep your thoughts to three minutes. And if you would like to speak, we would ask that you would fill out one of these yellow speaker forms. And the first individual who would like to speak today is Jerry Keller.
Good afternoon. You, Mayor. Councilmembers, people in attendance. My name is Jerry Keller. I've been a resident of Rancho Mirage for more than 24 years. My wife Barbara and I own Aqua Potza California Bistro, a successful restaurant located at the river in Rancho Mirage. We started Aqua Potza 10 years ago and invested a large amount of time, energy, and resources to make it successful. We annually employ more than 130 people, pay a substantial amount of taxes to the city every year. Barbara and I have run our business in the most positive manner and have been deeply involved in helping the community and charities in Rancho Mirage throughout the Coachella Valley. We deeply resent the recent petty and ugly political campaign being run by three city council members and one of the candidate against Scott Hines, using us and Aqua Potza as a way to denigrate him, and while doing so, creating a negative image about us and Aqua Potza, completely unfairly bringing us into this disgusting political propaganda they are disseminating. We all know the phrase, "The truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth," but by using half-truths and innuendos, candidates have not told the whole truth about the political potential grant, about the potential grants to Aqua Potza, and by not telling the whole truth, have totally distorted what actually happened. In an August meeting with Mayor Richard Cott, he suggested that the city could possibly help with the exterior and the interior renewal of Aqua Potza, and that he would recommend to begin the process for city financial assistance to help us so that we could enthusiastically promote our commitment to the river. We did this in Palm Springs with Lulu California Bistro. They gave us a grant of $100,000, which the mayor said last month was repaid within 10 months of taxes. Mayor Kite's initial involvement has been totally ignored, as Dana Hobart and his group have used Aqua Potza, Barbara and me, as political pawns to get rid of Scott Hines. At the November 7 council meeting, the city's director of finance, Isaiah Hagerman, told the meeting that for every dollar the city would advance to Aqua Potza, it would get $6 in return, a 600% return on the money they would invest in Aqua Potza. This factual and very positive information was never shown in any of their political pieces. Dana Hobart's answer was, "The city is not in the business of making a profit." That's absurd. Of course Rancho Mirage has to make a profit to stay in existence. This vicious, petty political campaign, using Aqua Potza, Barbara and me, and casting us in a negative light, all to try to get rid of Scott Hines, has got to stop. Even worse, Charles Townsend, another candidate, had the absolute gall to insinuate that I am supporting Scott Hines because he voted positively on the grant. Four years ago, I supported Scott Hines because I felt he had the capabilities to truly help the city, and at that time, I also supported Dana Hobart. Clearly, I was right about Scott Hines.
He never told me.
I ran, Dana, I ran a thing in the terrace for you.
Jerry?
I'm sorry, he answered the question. Charles Townsend's petty denigration of me is disgusting. If I sound angry about this completely unfair attack against 130 employees at Aqua Potza, Barbara and me, it's because I am angry, I'm very angry, and said that our reputation and the reputation of Rancho Mirage are being put in a very ugly petty position in the Coachella Valley. I am very angry that they're attempting to have Aqua Potza lose business, pay less taxes, rather than running a positive, intelligent campaign to get reelected. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak on a non-agenda item today? Okay, seeing none, we'll now move on to the next item on the calendar for today, and that's city council and board comments. Any comments from the council? Iris? Dana?
Using my better judgment, I will not have any comments with respect to the false statements made by Mr. Keller.
Okay, thank you. Ted? Okay. I have no comments, so we will now move on to the next item, and that is the consent calendar. And the consent calendar is generally included with items that are routine in nature and can be approved with one motion, and today we have one item on the consent calendar, and I'll call on our city manager, Randy Binder, to review that item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm sure the council chambers are filled today because they want to hear about the citywide rubberized crack sealing project on the consent calendar. The request from staff is that the council award the contract to rubberize crack filler sealant incorporated in the amount of $192,901. The city engineer cost estimate for this project was $210,000, so this is the second lowest bidder, and it's below the cost estimate. The first lowest bidder called and said that they had made a clerical error and that they were withdrawing their bid, and they're allowed to do that per Public Contract Code Section 5103. The crack sealer is typically installed on city streets four to six months before the city installs what's called the rubberized emulsion aggregate slurry, which is basically a slurry seal. So we seal the cracks, we give that a time to take and expand, and then we do the slurry sealing of the streets. That's why your streets in Rancho Mirage are as beautiful as they are. So staff is recommending approval of the $192,000 contract. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thank you. There's probably a lot more than any of you want to know about crack sealing streets in Rancho Mirage. Thank you. I do have a request from an individual who would like to speak on this item.
Hello. It doesn't have to do with the crack sealant. I don't really care about the crack sealant. My name's Jim Walker.
Jim, this is the consent calendar. Are you speaking on this item?
No.
Okay, then we'll have to ask you to sit down, because we already had comments from the audience.
Okay.
Thank you.
Should I come back in the next meeting?
Yes, that would be great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any questions of staff regarding item number one for the day? Okay, thanks for being here, Bill. And can I have a motion, please, to accept the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Would you please vote? And the motion carries 4-0 with one absent. We'll now move on to the action calendar, which is item number two, a request to extend the Ritz Carlton Hotel operating covenant, and I'll call on our city manager to give you the details on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Well, here we are. We almost have a Ritz Carlton open in the city of Rancho Mirage. As you will hear from the Ritz Carlton general manager today, the hotel is scheduled to open to the public in 11 weeks on May 15, 2014. The financial agreement that was issued by the city of Rancho Mirage, which is called an operating covenant, is due to expire on March 1. The covenant is an integral part of the developer's financing package to complete this project. It's important to note that the city has not given any financial consideration to date for the project. There's no rebates, and no real estate transactions have occurred, and they won't occur unless and until the hotel opens as a Ritz Carlton. The developer, Cam Sang, has requested an extension of the covenant to May 15, 2014, to coincide with the opening of the hotel. Issuing the certificate of occupancy allows the city to sign off on the project, but as we'll hear today from the Ritz Carlton representatives, occupancy starts their comprehensive countdown. The issuing of the CVO only starts their comprehensive countdown to actually opening the hotel. The certificate of occupancy was actually issued this morning. The city received a large cash security to guarantee the completion of the items that haven't been done yet. For instance, most of the landscaping's installed, but there are some trees and shrubs that are missing from the parkway. We are missing some as-built engineering plans. The construction spoils between the hotel and the Marada development are not fully cleaned up, and all of that has to be done before the $132,750 cash deposit is returned to the developer. In order to issue the certificate of occupancy, all the fire, life, safety issues have been addressed with the hotel. Previously, when the covenant was extended, our city council required the developer to deposit $25,000 per month with the city. This is in addition to $100,000 that was also deposited for another extension. So at this point, the deposit fund will total $740,000 on May 15. The covenant states that the city keeps 55% of that, $407,000. The city will also take back the other 45% by withholding future bed tax rebates. So in effect, the city will keep the entire $740,000, 55% now, and 45% within one year. All of the terms of the covenant would remain the same, except for the opening date. Phil Wolfgram, the vice president for Cam Sang New Age out of Arcadia, California, is also asking for up to a 30-day cure period beyond May 15. His request is that before the city formally pursues a default of the covenant, either myself or the city council would grant them some number of days to remedy the delay. For those of you that received a copy of the Ritz Carlton report that was posted yesterday, we did omit by accident the Cam Sang letter asking for the extension. The city attorney sent a copy to the media when they asked for it. He said he didn't realize that it was left off of the agenda, so the letter asking for the extension is part of the packet today and is available for anyone to take a look at. Most of it actually is quoted in the staff report. So the big picture here, to keep in mind, that we are not talking about an extension for a property owner to go try to find a developer and then find financing and then commence reconstruction of the project. Instead, we're talking about an extension to the actual developer, and as we have all witnessed, he has invested millions to complete this project, to finish construction, and turn the property over to the Ritz Carlton. This point in time, it's up to the city council to determine if the developer receives an extension to allow the Ritz Carlton to open according to their own internal countdown procedures within the next 11 weeks. So, Mr. Mayor, as we navigate a completion of this, we approach a grand opening of the Ritz Carlton, I would like to thank the developer, Cam Sang New Age out of Arcadia, California. I'd like to thank Mr. Doug Watson and his entire Ritz Carlton executive team. I'd like to thank my city staff for going above and beyond, doing their inspections the last couple of weeks, actually for the last eight years. Primarily, I'd like to thank the city council and our subcommittee, Mayor Richard Kite and Dana Hobart, Councilman Hobart, for your guidance and your professional business acumen in the last eight years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Randy. Are there any questions, Randy, from council? Iris? Dana?
No.
Ted? Okay. At this point, we'll now go into the public testimony, and I'd like to begin with the applicant, Phil Wolfgram, Senior Vice President of Cam Sang Company. Phil, would you like to come forward?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. First of all, I want to, again, mirror Randy's gratitude for the city, for the council members who have supported us through this time period in getting the hotel open. We've been working feverishly for the last 12 months or so to get the property open, and as we near the finish line, we find that we need a little bit more time. Today, we have Ronnie Lamb, the president of our company, who's here to support and add his voice, if needed, to our request. John Hicks, who you've heard, I think, monthly now for the last year or so, who has given you status reports on the progress of the project, and also you will have Ritz Carlton staff, who is our partner in getting this hotel open. In addition to the financial support that the city has asked us to give, I want to remind the residents and the city council that this project, unlike a new build where you don't see revenue from the developer until possibly a project is open, that this project has been paying property taxes to the city for the last upwards of 10 years. And so we're obviously, I think, a big supporter of the city's services up to this point, and just want to beg your indulgence for another 10 to 11 weeks as we get to the finish line, and as we work together with Ritz Carlton to open the hotel, would like to ask your consideration to grant this extension. I'll take any questions if you'd like.
Questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Ronnie Lamb, who is president of Cam Sang Company. Ronnie, would you like to come forward?
Hi, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, all the rest of the council member. My name is Ronnie Lamb. I'm actually the president of the Cam Sang Company, which is a developer for finishing the Ritz Carlton. And for the last 12 months, I sincerely thank you very much for all the department from each, from the city, to help finish the hotel and give us all the support. As Phil just mentioned, I mean, we coming so far on the finish line, and definitely we've been here, I think it's five months ago, talk about how difficult to finish a project that is half-built, and not only half-built, it's only, you know, it's four years ago, so lots of things that we have to piece and match and put it all together and finish it. And, I mean, the things that is only four months old, you can easy to find, the things that are four years old or five years old. So we are really trying our best. If we went back to the, you know, 2007 and 2008 and looked at that schedule, they do almost need another 10 months to finish the open. And to be honest, we start with March, and we really take the whole 12 months, but again, because of four-year differences. But at this time, I think we come to the finish line, the hotel is passed off the safety inspection and everything that is today, as we said earlier, the hotel certificate of occupancy was being granted. Being say that, of course, I think, being a five-star hotel, I think people need to train real well in order to make sure we have this five-star and four diamond. We saw that bring to the city, and so that's why we don't want to open it in a two weeks, five weeks' time in order to deteriorate this five-star category. And that's why we need those 10 weeks to train our people real well and to let the people open the Ritz Carlton. So I hope you really consider that 10 weeks is something that is bring something to the Coachella Valley that no other city they have, that the same hotel. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie. This time, I'd like to ask Doug Watson to come forward. Doug is the general manager of Ritz Carlton Rancho Mirage, and Doug, it's nice to have you here with us. Doug is a longtime Rancho Mirage resident, too.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I am thrilled to be with you and tell you this story. Today is a great day. At 4 o'clock this morning, we announced to the world that we will open the Ritz Carlton Rancho Mirage on May 15. So all of the news medias around the world were announced of that today. As you've seen, the hotel, it is spectacular. So I also want to thank you all for the work that you've done in allowing this project to continue and to move forward. Your staff has been just fabulous, Randy, and all of the work that's been done at the hotel is really, really beautiful. I want to thank Ronnie Lamb, Phil Wolfgram, and John Hicks, who I see every day. I see more than I see my family, frankly, these days, and they have done terrific work. It has been difficult, there is no doubt about it. But we have the journey continuing. As you know, in the Ritz Carlton brand, we have a very specific countdown process, and we are on that glide path right now. And so we begin hiring our ladies and gentlemen on Monday. We then begin the training of them as we conclude technology platforms that have to be sequenced, that are very complicated, and as you would imagine, each system has its own unique backbone that has to be provided. We then bring our ladies and gentlemen in from around the world. We will bring probably 50 or 60 people to come in and train, and we will begin the formal training and culturalization of our new employees with the intent of opening on May 15. We only get one chance to make a great first impression, and that's why we're trying to work so hard on this disciplined process, and that's why May 15 has come to be. And so I know you have seen the hotel, or many of you have, and for the residents, we are thrilled in Rancho Mirage to be with you on this journey. We can't wait to have you all here. To the residents of Marada, we are delighted to be able to also offer you the experiences of the hotel. I know you've been waiting a long time. So, Mr. Mayor, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have or anyone on the council, but again, our processes are very specific, and to deviate from them, excuse me, is just something that we don't want to do. We don't want to risk the best first impression we can make. So we're thrilled for all of your efforts and help along this path.
Thank you, Doug. Anybody have a question for Doug? No? Okay, thank you. Are you going to have your sales and marketing director talk also?
I can, if you'd like.
Okay. Anne Marie Wayland?
Anne Marie Wayland has joined us from Powers Court, Ireland, and is happy to explain what she sees, how beautiful this hotel will be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for inviting me to speak this afternoon. As Doug mentioned to you, we are opening a world-class resort, and in order to do this properly, it has to be perfect. So right now, the ladies and gentlemen that are on board are senior leaders that have come from a lot of our properties from all around North America and around the world to be able to launch the hotel in the way that we believe it should be done. So on May 15, we will open our doors. I know our residents of the city are very excited. To give you an idea of what we have been doing for the last few months, because it is important that everybody understands that we've been working diligently right now to ensure that there's business on the books and that there will be, ladies and gentlemen, to take care of our guests. So right now, we're doing all of our marketing communication strategies. We are making sure that our leaders in the sales arena are out on the road and around the country right now. Our global sales organization for Ritz Carlton already and have been talking about us for many months. We have had our leaders from those areas, so from our global sales leaders around North America, visit the property. We have been doing site inspections on a daily basis for clients that are bringing business from all over America to this hotel. So rest assured that when the doors open, we will be ready. We're very excited, and we look forward to being part of the community very soon.
Okay, thank you. Welcome to Rancho Mirage.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to start having the public testimony. For those of you who filled out the request-to-speak forms, and the first individual is Andy Gladstein. Andy?
I'm going to withhold my comments for right now.
Okay. The next individual is John Bianchi.
Thank you for the opportunity, but I believe I will hold my comments for the present time.
Pardon me, John.
I will hold my comments for the present time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. The next speaker is Tim Ellis.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the Rancho Mirage City Council. I'm speaking to you today as the chairman of this convention visitors bureau, valley-wide Greater Palm Springs CBB, and also a long-term hotelier in the desert for 21 years. Although the HIBC has not taken an official position, we've been talking about the Ritz, obviously, for a very long time, and we're extremely supportive of that hotel because it really, really helps elevate our brand, the CBB's brand, even further than it is today, because we're dropping in right at the top end of five-star resort, which is the shining star property of the valley potentially. Most other hoteliers are very much in support, and to that end, we encourage you to listen to the Ritz Carlton and its developers and grant them their extension. As a 30-plus-year hotel veteran myself, having opened up a number of properties, there's lots of moving parts to these hotels, especially when you're trying to open up a five-star resort. Congratulations to you to attracting such a wonderful property to your town, and we ask that you support them in their request to allow them to open May 15. My very best wishes to the staff of the hotel. We wish you luck, and we hope you run a 90% occupancy. Thank you.
Thank you. The next request to speak is Bob Tebow.
Good afternoon. I'm Bob Tebow, and I'm actually a resident of Rancho Mirage, but I also am here on behalf of the Greater Palm Springs Convention and Visitors Bureau. You know, the launch of this hotel is important to all of us. Not only does it bring with it all the loyal followers of the Ritz Carlton brands and the luxury brands that we all enjoy, but it also will bring the worldwide media and focus on our destination. So the success of the launch is very important to all of us, as the world will look at us and our brand will be expanded throughout the world, and we're looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next request to speak is Aftab Dada.
Good afternoon, Mayor and city council and staff. My name is Aftab Dada. I'm the general manager of the Hilton for the past 24 years. I'm here this afternoon in support of granting the extension for the newly remodeled Ritz Carlton Resort. We are now in the most critical time for the transition from a dated facility to an almost completed five-star resort. almost completed five-star resort. The difference between another hotel on a hill and a Ritz Carlton that will draw and retain those with both the good taste and required means to experience the ultimate in home away experience in just 75 days. Those few days will make all the difference in getting the service staff trained, standards set, and all the fine details perfected in order to provide the ultimate experience for those special guests that have come to expect perfection as a norm. As Doug just mentioned, that the first experience is the lasting impression. I ask that you please grant Ritz the 75-day extension in order to realize the long-term benefits that will ultimately accrue, especially in Ranch Mirage, plus all the economic benefits for the entire Coachella Valley. A 75-day extension in the future is a small price to pay for decades and decades of success. I hope you will unanimously grant this extension. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Lance Levite.
Levit.
Levit, sorry, Lance.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm here, I'm the Director of Sales and Marketing for Enterprise Rent-A-Car, and I have a unique responsibility in that I oversee all of our hotel relationships and Convention and Visitors Bureau's relationships in California, Southern California.
Could you give your address, too, please?
What's that?
Your address.
Sure. Business address or?
Residence.
La Quinta.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure. And I'm here to speak on the extension of the Ritz Carlton. We obviously are very excited to see this hotel open, and really, my unique responsibilities in California allow me to speak a little bit on behalf of the entire Southern California hospitality group. And I can tell you that there is an unbelievable buzz about this property opening here, and from a business perspective and certainly a resident of the valley, we request that you grant the extension to the Ritz Carlton.
Thank you for being here. Next speaker will be Jim Walker. Jim's not here. And next speaker is Jerry Keller.
Hello again, Mayor, City Council. Granting this extension to a Ritz Carlton is an absolute no-brainer. They're wonderful hotels. I've stayed at them. I know Doug Watson, he's going to be a great general manager, and I'm sure the hotel's going to be beautiful. I want to thank the city staff for working so closely with him to get it accomplished. I'm a little saddened that Scott Hines, councilman, isn't here. He's at a speaking engagement at the U.S. Air Force Academy on leadership. I know he's been very instrumental and involved in helping this project along. In fact, in the Daily Sun this morning, it was reported that Scott's recommendation to have the Ritz deposit $25,000 a month has resulted in $365,000 in the city. So I just want to thank everybody for everything that's happened. I think it's going to be a great hotel. We have a couple of restaurants, and we hope we'll get some of the people to come down and visit them. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who has not filled out a form that would like to speak? Okay, Jerry and John, either one of you wish to speak now? I mean, Andy? Andy, do you want to speak? No? John? Okay, well, thanks for being here today. Okay, if there are no other speakers in the audience, we'll bring this back to the council and for either questions of staff or comments, and I'll start with Iris.
My only question is, what assurances do we have that May 15th will be the day? We've had several disappointments in the past. We're thrilled that you are going to be opening in our city. We've tried to make everything work as well as possible to accommodate you. But I feel like we are just sometimes...
Phil, would you like to answer that, or Doug?
First, let me comment from the developer's side, and then we'll let Doug comment on the operator's side. We are close. Unlike other extensions, which you have considered and granted, as was mentioned earlier, the financing, which a big part of the package involves, is in place, and this extension is necessary to keep that going. We are in the, we have a CFO. Liquor license has been given, health department has approved the project and given their okay. And so there really is no, should be no reason that we cannot meet the opening date on May 15th from the developer's side. We're substantially complete. There's no other obstacle that should stop on the developer's side, on the building's side, on the project being completed.
Iris, we have many of our people in architecture and construction that work on the Ritz Carlton side who offer us counsel. And when we hit certain milestones, that triggers processes along the way. We have great confidence in May 15th, and we begin hiring more than 200 people on Monday. So we are moving without hesitation at this point. So we've been given assurances, our process looks right, and that's how we landed on the date. So we have great confidence in May 15th as well.
Thank you, Doug. Iris, did you have any other comments? Okay. Ted, do you have any comments?
My comments are primarily to the developer. Being a developer myself, I have commiserated with the problems of a rehabilitation of a project. I realize how difficult it is, that it's much more simple to build from scratch than to get into a project when you don't know what's behind the walls. The area in which I've struggled and which I find difficult is certain representations to the council as to completion dates. And consequently, when we pass those kinds of dates on to the public and they're not fulfilled, it makes us appear that we're not giving out true facts. And that's a problem that I've had, and I think it besmirches our position, our reputation to some degree. I have walked the project, as you know, a number of times, and I have represented then to the constituents that certain work will be done based upon the assurance that I've been given. Something as simple as having all of the debris and trash removed, which is unsightly from the standpoint of the Murata people, and I was told that it would be done by a certain date, and it's not done. And that's, that is reflective upon me of passing on incorrect information, and that doesn't appeal to me. So I must say that as sympathetic as I am, I do feel that there should be some possible adjustment in the financial arrangement by and between the city and the developer because of the lost TOT that has inured to the detriment of our residents. And I think others will address that, but I don't want you to feel that I'm being cold-hearted, but on the other hand, I do feel that that's our responsibility to the residents.
Okay, thank you, Ted. Dana? Oh, okay. Phil, would you like to address that?
Yeah, let me just comment. First of all, I apologize to the, on behalf of the developer, to the council members on any missed dates, items that have gone unaccomplished. We, as we discover new unknown facets of the project, yes, it has caused dates to slip, but it was unintentional, unknown, and as Ronnie mentioned earlier, the project was closed in 2006. And in the remaining eight years, lots of things were just unknowable by the time we came in. I would ask that the conditions remain the same as far as TOT, as has been mentioned and has been reported in the press. This property will generate annually to the city approximately a million dollars a year in TOT that will come off the backs of visitors to the city, not residents of the city. And I think we think that the city will gain a great benefit from the opening of the hotel and keeping the existing conditions in place. I appreciate your concern, Ted, but I think we would ask that you keep, please keep the current agreements in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Dana?
Well, like my colleagues and all of you, I'm greatly, greatly disappointed that we're not being finished any sooner than we apparently will be. But I do remember 2006 when the lodge closed. A couple of years later, when GenCom had taken over the project, they were moving forward, and they had good funding, and the project would have been completed years ago had it not been for the deep recession of 2008 when Lehman Brothers went bankrupt and they were the funding arm of GenCom. In order to keep GenCom from leaving the project and walking away, taking their loss, and moving forward, the city put together this benefits package to try to stimulate them, GenCom, to continue trying to find new funding for this project. All of the continuances that we've had over these years since 2008 have been related to giving the developer time to find a new source of funding revenue. This is the first time, I believe, can't remember positive what our last situation was, but at the worst, it's the second time, but I think this is the first time that we have ever been asked to grant a continuance, an extension of the covenant, when we knew absolutely that the funding was there, the developer was working hard, and the Ritz has already made a substantial presentation of personnel. Now, maybe it's because Richard and I have been on the Ritz Subcommittee, I going back to 2006, Richard following the death of Ron Meepos. But that has given us a perspective that allows us to examine the integrity and the bona fides, if you will, of the developer. We went through Magna, the second developers in charge, and they could not find funding. And they were holding the ball and carrying the GenCom people together, but it was led by Magna, an Argentine company. And they searched and searched, and finally, they came across the Cam Sang Company. And that was just, I'm guessing now, two years ago, something like that. The Cam Sang Company made their inspections and took over this project. But they also needed funding, additional funding, and they searched, and they eventually found it. When they got it, and we extended the covenant, because, we didn't extend it because we wanted to extend it, we extended it because we knew then what we know now. And that is, if we do not extend this covenant, this deal will die. The people, the companies that have made loan commitments to Cam Sang have taken liens and assignments on the assets of our benefits package, and it amounts to millions of dollars. Now, I may be being a bit dramatic in saying that it would die, but I don't think so. I think this project would end, and I think we would then face a lengthy period of litigation, all that time with nothing happening up there. The residents of Murata have been anxious. They have a lot to gain by the benefit of the Ritz Hotel opening. The city has a lot to gain. The city has been anxious. I don't know how many times I've made a report to the CBB of the status. I've been anxious. Richard's been anguished, perhaps would be a better word. We've all been anxious. But if we don't approve this extension, one thing we can be certain of, I believe, is that we will have no Ritz Carlton opening in May of this year or next year or probably ever. The Murata people deserve a hotel. That was part of their original understanding when they bought the property. The fact that two of the leading spokespeople for the Murata withheld comments today, I know that had to be difficult for them because they're upset. They're angry, but you can't be angry at somebody who's trying hard like Cam Sang has been doing, but you're still bubbling inside. I think all of us are angry to some level that it's played out like it has and made this drama so real to all of us. We all pass people in the street, and I can't tell you how many times I'm asked questions about it. But I think that the obligation on the city council is to be reasonable, to look for the best interests of the city. And there's one thing that has never been mentioned in these discussions that is of extreme importance, both to the city, to the Murata people, and to the Ritz development. This project would not be going forward from the Ritz perspective if it weren't for the condominium development that is attached to this development. 154, I think, is the number of condominiums and townhouses and that sort of thing that will be developed on this property. That will produce TOT for the city when those owners of those condominiums do rent them out to people for 28 or less days. They'll pay bed tax just like hotel guests. This property is the most essential property in our city. And if we want to benefit as quickly as possible and get past all of this, we have to, we have to move this program and this project forward. As for changing the terms, I don't favor changing the terms, increasing the $25,000 penalty. I don't favor changing that because I know that nobody has done anything wrong. They have tried their living best to get this project completed. And you simply, in my view, do not berate somebody with a spanking who has been doing their best to benefit themselves and the community and the Murata community. I urge my colleagues to simply extend the covenant to May 15th and hope and pray that it opens with a bang. Starting today, at least the certificate of occupancy is passing from the city to Cam Sang and from Cam Sang to the Ritz. Cam Sang and from Cam Sang to the Ritz. I cannot tell you how difficult it is for us to grant another extension. We all hoped and believed that it would be open by now, but I know many of the stories of what Cam Sang has developed as to why they haven't been able to open. And I think they have been in good faith. And I hope we grant them the extension that they request. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Yesterday, I had an opportunity to walk through the grounds of the hotel, and let me assure you, we have a world-class facility up on that hill. Went through the rooms, went through the public area, went through the kitchen facilities, went through the outdoor areas. Everything is as you would expect it for a Ritz Carlton. And I think this will certainly be a great boon to our city in bringing guests from around the world who know Rancho Mirage to be a world-class resort, and now they know that in that world-class resort, we have a world-class facility like the Ritz Carlton. We have a great opportunity here to work with the Ritz Carlton and their quality staff and bring the Ritz Carlton back to the stature that it once was. I think we need to be patient for a few more weeks to allow the Ritz Carlton to complete their training of their staff and to finish the remaining details that really makes the Ritz Carlton brand so special. Today, we've had an opportunity to listen to the general manager from the Ritz Carlton, Doug Watson, who has told us a little bit about the Ritz and what's going on. And it's great to hear that they announced to the world today that Rancho Mirage will have a Ritz Carlton Hotel on May 15th. That's something we should all be proud of and will not only be a benefit to the city, but will be a benefit to the whole valley. May 15th is really not a long way to wait for an opportunity like this. Many cities in our valley would wait a lot longer if they knew they had an opportunity to attract a Ritz Carlton. So, you know, we started this journey, Dana and I started this journey years ago. I remember in 2006, when the lodge decided to leave the valley and another party came in. And in 2008, we had the bankruptcy of Lehman Brothers, and it seems like it's been more than six years since then to today. But we've gone through that journey, and really, the prize is in sight right now. And the prize is the Ritz Carlton Resort. All we need to do is to extend the covenant to May 15th for one last time, and I hope it is one last time. So at this point, I would turn it over to my city attorney, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, I've been working on this project in one form or the other since 1992, starting with the proposed golf course on the Cathedral City site. So I've been around this project for a long, long time, and I thought the golf course project was difficult. In any event, I also have a confession, and that confession is that the reason why we're having this meeting today is my fault. And although we knew earlier this month that they were most likely to go into request an extension, we had no idea how much time they needed. I can tell you that the Subcommittee and city manager were very, very, very disturbed by what we were being told. And it wasn't until just nine days ago that we found out for sure that they were definitely going to need an extension. The question was how long that extension was going to be. They had, I was told by both the Ritz, representatives of the Ritz and representatives of Cam Sang, the developer, that they needed to meet and confer with one another to determine what date was going to be the real date. And so we told them, you need to find out that date and come back and give us an explanation as to why you need that extension. And one of the issues that was going on behind the scenes had to do with the certificate of occupancy. The hotel cannot be open to members of the public, it cannot be deemed safe unless they get this final inspection done and a certificate of occupancy is issued. And so I thought that when we were talking about scheduling a meeting, I was told by the developers that it was likely that they were going to be issued a certificate of occupancy sometime earlier this week. I met and conferred with various staff members who are involved with that process, and they told me, Steve, that's not likely, it's probably going to be Thursday. And so that's why we didn't, I didn't want to have the meeting yesterday. I had requested that the meeting be on Friday, since this is the absolute last day. And I figured that if they showed up with an issued CFO, that would show good faith on their part that the developer has met its obligation to have that hotel ready to open. And as you heard tonight from the general manager from the Ritz, Doug Watson, the fact that they're not going to be able to open has nothing to do with them. It all has to do with retaining their personnel and training. So that's why we are meeting today, and I understood that the mayor had made a comment last week during the meeting that we were going to schedule a special meeting today, and I was not told that anybody was not going to be made available. So that's my fault.
Okay. Thanks, Steve, for your comments. Any further comments from council? No? Ted?
No.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I would like to extend the covenant to 15th, May 2014.
Okay. Are there any questions on the motion? All right, we have a motion in a second. Would you please vote? And the motion carries 4-0 with one absent, and I hope this begins a new relationship, strong relationship with Morata, with the Ritz Carlton, and even strengthens the relationship with the city of Rancho Mirage. Thank you all for coming today, and we'll look forward to seeing you at the Ritz on May 15th. Thank you, and the meeting's adjourned.